It is June 6th, and we are going to start by opening the special town meeting number one, which is moved by, um, I don't need a motion, okay. But there has been a motion to defer opening special town meeting number one to be the first thing heard tomorrow, June 7th, moved by Paul Warren, and seconded by Mr. Friedman. We need a majority vote to do that. Everyone's ready? Please get your tablets out, make sure they're awake, make sure you're probably sitting down, ready to vote. And vote on whether or not you will agree to defer STM 1 until first thing tomorrow. If you don't vote, it will be very inconvenient, so please vote. Okay, drop, drop the vote, please. Quiet, please. Okay, the motion passes, 136 yes, nine no, four abstentions, and we will take up special town meeting one as the first item of business tomorrow. I will entertain a motion to adjourn special town meeting one.
Second.
Okay, by voice vote, uh, anyone opposed? Okay, we are adjourning that, and we are reconvening the special, excuse me, the annual town meeting of 2023. Okay, we are first going to address the budget, which you have gotten multiple emails about. As I explained in some of those budgets, some of my emails, what happened was that when town meeting approved the omnibus budget last Thursday, you were referred to budget tables that had been superseded by the revised budget that the select board had submitted the day before. The revised budget had taken into account the adjustments that were made as a result of the collective bargaining agreements. Melissa Goff gave you a full rundown of all the changes that were given relating to these budget discussions and budget agreements. The correct charts were handed out and posted today, and were also actually appended to the select board's documents that you were given that night. So the only thing you are being asked to do tonight is to rescind the vote on the incorrect budget amount, which was $375,000,221,343, and approve an omnibus budget. Please don't talk. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Please be quiet in the hall. And approve an omnibus budget of $375,500, excuse me, $375,580,884. First, we have to approve the motion to rescind the budget, which must pass by a majority. This motion is made by Mr. Green and seconded by Mr. Doughty. It will be a recorded vote, it will drop now. Okay, the motion passes, the budget we voted on last week is rescinded, it passes by 179 yes, one no, and 26 abstentions. Two abstentions, thank you. The final number is 179 in favor of rescinding the budget, one no, two abstentions. I am about to give that now. We will now vote on a motion to approve the omnibus budget of $375,580,884, which is moved by Mr. Doughty and seconded by Mr. Green. We will now take a motion on that budget and vote on it. Please, please drop it, and please, everyone be quiet. Excuse me, there should be no talking in the auditorium. The budget is passed with 183 yes votes, two no votes, and four abstentions. I am now going to turn the podium over to Assistant Moderator Karen, who will moderate article number three. 13. As long as we're going over numbers and correcting them, we're going to correct that one, we're going to discuss article 13.
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator?
If you have a point of order, come to the microphone.
I guess this is a point of order, uh, you, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Bernard Green, a member of the select board.
I apologize, Mr. Green has a statement, and I would like to introduce him to you to make his statement, and then we will go to article 13. My apologies, Mr. Green.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Moderator Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, although I'm speaking solely for myself. Last week during the debate on article 19, I made a statement that has been interpreted as hurtful to some people who are not the intended target of my statement. I noted the harmful and vile attacks on a group of Black and Hispanic leaders in Brookline in a newsletter that was circulated widely, and then I said something that maybe I should have said a little more precisely. I said that there is a lesson from this incident, and that lesson was what goes around, comes around. Which was an idiomatic way of saying that when you do bad to some people, you risk that that bad will come back to you in some way. So many people in town meeting knew who that lesson was intended for. A person who has on multiple occasions stated in public video-recorded meetings that I, Bernard Green, had committed crimes and should be punished, presumably by incarceration. I ignored those statements at the multiple times that they were made, but the way I phrased it last week inartfully suggested that it was intended for each of the five people pictured on the last page of that unfortunate newsletter. The other people in the picture I may have had major disagreements with, but we were always civil and self-respecting. I love having disagreements with people because sometimes I learn and other times I teach, so it's a positive experience as long as you go in with the right attitude. I think the lesson for all of us is that the harsh and hateful tone of conversation in Brookline over the past few years by some, not all, not even an overwhelming majority, and the tone of the national conversation are both wrong and will result in harm to all of us in Brookline and in America in one way or another. We should just bear that in mind as we go into our debates on very hot-button controversial issues. You know, what I don't think people in Brookline appreciate is that we are very privileged, right? We're privileged whether we live in big mansions in South Brookline or live in Brookline public housing, we are privileged. We have great schools, the safe community because of our great police department, we have great departments, DPW, recreation, and others, and we are at the center of a transportation network that will get us anywhere we want in the Boston region. So there's no need for harsh hateful conversations in our debates because we're that privileged. And I'd like to sort of quote a great muse of the 20th century, Rodney King, who said, and in the context, this was a very, very profound statement, can't we all just get along? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, who apparently has one more moment.
So I wasn't reading this very carefully, what I don't think I said is that for those people who interpreted what I said as attacking them, I sincerely apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That brings us to article 13, the motion is found on supplement number five, page three, which if you're using the color-coded ones that were handed out is lime green. It is, it would create an office of housing stability. It is moved by Ms. Wu, seconded by Mr. Boers, and we will first hear, I think I said supplement, page five, five, page three, but if I didn't, that's where it is on the supplement, and with that, we will hear from the petitioner, Ms. Wu. Oh, all right, I'm, that, that's fine, sir, I'm sorry I missed your name. Fair enough, you know how, you know how the drill works.
Chi Chi Wu, town meeting member, precinct seven.
My name is John Card, I'm a renter in Brookline, and I use he they pronouns. In my professional life, I am a lawyer. I used to provide free representation to tenants with severe disabilities experiencing housing instability. I am also a current renter here in Brookline, as I mentioned. I know I am incredibly lucky to live here, not just because of my work, but also because I spent the better part of a decade achieving the stability for myself and my family. I tell you all this not because I believe this office would serve me. I tell you this to illustrate how intimately I know that even the most basic housing supports can protect the right to have safe and stable housing. I have used those supports and expertise to protect myself, my loved ones, and my clients, but achieving basic housing But achieving basic housing stability should not require a lawyer. Tenants are entitled to safe and sanitary homes by law and by moral decency. The office we propose would be a small but effective step toward protecting our neighbors, and here is why. Next slide, please. Our entire nation is facing a rental housing crisis, one only exacerbated by the pandemic. Tenants are facing a daunting market with rising rent prices and increased cost of living. The effects of the pandemic are still not fully known, but we do know that even here in Massachusetts, a record number of households face the threat of eviction or displacement. Next slide, please. Importantly, healthcare experts mark stable housing as a threshold for improving health outcomes, especially in marginalized communities. You can see here that high housing costs are often associated with later diagnosis of conditions and poorer health outcomes. Next slide. Moreover, displacement pushes those same folks with poorer health outcomes to rely on expensive acute care services and to rely on social services, both of which are industries currently experiencing record levels of burnout and fatigue. Next slide. Let's look at who is sitting at the epicenter of these crises. Mid-pandemic reports indicated that while 16% of adult renters were behind in rent across the nation, there were overwhelming disparities in the representation of non-white households. Next slide. Boston, as well as its surrounding area, continues to be one of the most expensive places in the country to rent. As we discussed before, when rent gets high, renters inevitably face displacement, eviction, and many other problems. Next slide. And when rent gets high, renters of color in our community take the brunt. Nearly half of Black and Latinx renters in greater Boston are cost burden, meaning that they pay more than 30% of their income toward rent. Next slide. Unprecedented rates of eviction filings are particularly concerning because as soon as an eviction case is filed, regardless of the outcome of the case, the case can be used by landlords to refuse later rental applications. Next slide. So let's focus here in Brookline. Just over half of all housing stock in Brookline is renter-occupied. Folks like myself account for over half of this town. Next slide. And here in Brookline, rents are going up, just like the rest of the country, and we know what that means. Brookline has many renters stretching pennies to keep their homes. Next slide. Recent data shows that 42.7% of renters are cost burdened. And even more concerning, nearly a quarter of folks are severely cost burdened. Shockingly, this means that those households spend more than half of their income on rent. Let, next slide. Finally, on the screen, you'll see a request for help from our local town discussion page on Facebook. Unfortunately, this is one of far too many that have been posted in recent months. And I'll turn it over to Chi Chi.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So John has told you the why, why we need to help renters struggling in Brookline. I'm going to talk to you about the how, how we go about helping. And part of the solution is to create an Office of Housing Stability, or an OHS. Boston created one in 2016. Well, that's Boston. But we have a bunch of other cities that are a little bigger, a little smaller, comparable to Brookline, and all with the same or lower budgets, and they have an OHS. So Brookline should have one, and that's how we got to Article 13. Next slide, please. It's a very simple Warren article. It requires Brookline to have an OHS, and that's it. The article describes the mission, but it's up to the town administrator and select board to specify where the office goes, how many staff, what specific functions it'll engage in. It provides for a lot of flexibility. So it's simple, but the path here hasn't been simple, a little complex. Next slide, please. This shows the original article with amendments by CTOS because the original Warren article had a few more bullets of what an OHS might do. And the reaction to the original article was, well, you can see from the combined reports, there were not one, but three different referral motions. We were told by various folks it was a good idea, but, and then there were a bunch of concerns. As you will hear, those entities are now supportive of the amended version. The revision addresses the concerns. But we wanted to address some of them right now because folks here may have the same concerns. We are not taking passage for granted. So first, we can't afford another position. You know, in that budget, we just voted to spend a quarter of a million dollars on elevator renovations. Surely, we can spend half of that amount for a position to help the one in eight residents who are severely cost-burdened renters. We need more information about the problem. That's why we have a bunch of speakers here tonight to discuss why this is so necessary based on their own lived experience or that of renters they have assisted. And I urge you to listen to them. Please not call the question too quickly. Some of these folks will be telling very personal heartfelt stories of their struggles or the struggles of their neighbors. These are your fellow Brookliners. Please give them a few minutes to hear about their experiences with housing instability. Several speakers have shortened their remarks to one or two minutes. Finally, we heard of criticism, we need more details. Well, actually, the compromise ended up making the article simpler, and we really don't need more details.
I'm afraid it's a 30-second warning, Ms. Wu.
A bunch of other municipalities have done this already. Next slide, please. Somerville gave us their business plan. Malden gave us their request for proposals. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Thank you, and please vote favorable action on Article 13.
Thank you, Ms. Wu, Ms. Granoff, for the Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm Susan Granoff, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, speaking for a virtually unanimous Advisory Committee, which voted favorable action on Warren Article 13 as revised by a vote of 24 to zero with one abstention. The Advisory Committee supports Article 13 because it agrees with the petitioners. The time has come for Brookline to create an Office of Housing Stability for its residents at risk of housing displacement. If you are not currently a renter, try to imagine that yours is one of the over 52% of Brookline's households who are renters. You and your family have lived in your apartment for years. Then suddenly, one day, you receive a notice in the mail telling you that your lease will not be renewed. What do you do? Who do you turn to for help, guidance, information? If you go to the town's current website and look at the long list of departments and divisions, not a single one has the word "housing" in its title, even though two of these departments, the Council on Aging and Veteran Services, actually do provide help to elderly and veteran residents at risk of housing displacement. But you wouldn't know that from the website. Also unknown is whether any town department provides comparable assistance to residents who are not either elderly or a veteran. If you then do a search using the word "eviction", what you get are links to COVID emergency assistance, which is no longer in effect, numerous links to this warrant article, Warren Article 13, and links to random meeting minutes of the Commission on Women, the Commission on Disability, EDAB, the Housing Advisory Board, just because the word "evicted" happens to appear in their minutes. After all this, you would likely be left feeling that you are totally on your own and that Brookline's town government offers no help whatsoever. We, as a government, can and should do better than that. And by voting to create an Office of Housing Stability, we will. The office would become a visible, clearly designated, and knowable single point of contact within town government for all Brookline residents to turn to for help, information, guidance, and referrals should they ever become at risk of housing displacement. In addition, the office would develop initiatives to help combat and directly address the problem of housing displacement in Brookline. As originally drafted, Warren Article 13's bylaw language contained a long and very specific list of potential services that this office would have had the discretion to provide, even though there is still much unknown about the exact nature and extent of housing displacement in Brookline and about whether all of these potential services are needed or even desirable. As a result, the Advisory Committee originally voted to refer the original warrant, Article 13, to a select board committee for further study. However, these concerns have all been addressed in the revised article before us today, which has deleted the problematic list of potential specific services from the bylaw language. Note that there is nothing in the wording of the revised bylaw that would prevent the Office of Housing Stability from providing any of these services should they be needed. But the services are no longer expressly codified, and the bylaw does not commit the town to providing any services that may not be needed. For all of the above reasons, the Advisory Committee enthusiastically urges favorable action on Warren Article 13 as revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff. Ms. Ashkenazi?
Thank you. For those of you that saw me running in, you will see me running out because downstairs at this exact same time is the track award ceremony for which my son is getting awarded. So I'll be running back. 2023 All-Star. Okay. Mary Mashkenazi, speaking on behalf of the Select Board, who voted 5-0 for favorable action for the amended Warren article. As you've heard, Warren Article 13 establishes an Office of Housing Stability, a single-point person within a town department whose job is to provide assistance to Brookline residents at risk of housing displacement and serve as a resource and clearinghouse of information for residents who need housing-related assistance, amongst other several key roles outlined in the Warren article that I won't read point by point because you have it in front of you. I sit as a Select Board representative on the Commission of Disability. You're wondering where this is going. I also am myself part of hearing, and I imagine for this reason and many others, many town members come to me that have disabilities that need help. When they reach out to me with support, and what I, what do I do? I reach out to Sarah Kaplan. Sarah Kaplan, our town's Community Relations Specialist and ADA Coordinator. Many of you probably have never heard of her before this town meeting, but now you have, may have had contact with her during this particular town meeting to help with getting accommodations. She's wonderful. I hope your ears are burning, Sarah. When people reach out to me for help, I connect them to Sarah. In my experience, Sarah helps them. She understands the challenges they face, and most importantly, she understands the resources available to them, not just town resources, but state and federal resources. And really, she understands disability rights. Brookline is more than half renters. Just by nature of volume, there are going to be issues. I can tell you, as a Select Board member, there are issues, and some of which are quite significant and really impact our residents. And I, for one, don't carry the knowledge needed to help them in the way they deserve. Think how unsettling it would be for you, your family, maybe your parents or your children, if they had issues with housing. It affects everything in your life. Safe housing is the key to, well, feeling safe and secure and having a job and a stable school experience for your children. You get it, right? So this is what we're talking about here. A Sarah Kaplan for housing stability. A single-point person who understands housing issues. Someone who is knowledgeable in the resources and rights and that can use that knowledge and know-how to help support the residents of Brookline to have safe and secure housing. I urge you to vote favorable action on Warren Article 13 as amended and supported by the Select Board, CTOS, AC, and the petitioners themselves. This is an important role we should be filling as a town, and I hope we do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boers.
Not used to the technology, I fear, I have to tell you. Good evening. Harry Boers, member of CTOS and also town meeting member for Precinct Three. So there are those in our community who are feeling the stress of housing instability. We know this qualitatively, but we don't fully understand it quantitatively. Now, the Planning Department has for years tried to contend with this issue as best they could, but it's tended to be on an ad hoc and episodic basis. It's an approach so far that has been both inefficient and insufficient. The proposed bylaw now offers a different approach by establishing an Office of Housing Stability. CTOS believes this is a grounded approach and supports the bylaw as now worded. We know Brookline's a very attractive community for a variety of reasons. We're also wedged in between major academic institutions, which provide an endless well of people willing to pay high prices for housing convenience. So all of these things conspire to make Brookline very expensive, and it's becoming more expensive. And there are residents in our community feeling these housing pressures. Friends, neighbors, families, people we know and people we don't. And often, this housing insecurity is accompanied by other issues: health, employment, fixed incomes, or other issues. And so the Office of Housing Stability can provide that identifiable point source support and referrals. The bylaw calls for an Office of Housing Stability, but just consider that a label. It doesn't require a new standalone office. It may be a person, a part-time FTE. It may be the restructuring of existing positions or any other configuration. It's a function that can be organizationally located in the spot that makes the most sense at any point in time. And Offices of Housing Stability exist in other communities, as we've heard. It's a known and understood term. For Brookline, it's important that there be an office, for lack of a better term, that is obvious, apparent, and recognizable to our citizens. We may not be able to do everything or provide everything, but finding help shouldn't be the mystery it is now. Some municipalities have specific departments and staff. Others designate a person to help with guidance and referrals. Malden contracts with a freestanding nonprofit organization to deliver the service. There is no one model. And our town administrator will work with others in crafting the best Brookline model. He's already begun work on a program for social services, and the town's recently issued an RFP for a consultant. An Office of Housing Stability can fit naturally into this matrix. As you've heard, the language, though not the effect, has changed somewhat from the original. Wording's been condensed and clarified. It gives discretion to the town administrator. The bullet list under the May clauses have been eliminated. Those things that were enumerated previously in the May clause, however, can still be approached administratively. As originally placed in the bylaw, though, it allowed for very broad discretion. And it's important to remember that any bylaw is not merely for the incumbent, but for all those who follow as well. And given that this is a new initiative for Brookline, with little experience, we should be judicious in our granting of authority in the bylaw. All of these things have been agreed to by the petitioners and incorporated into their now-main motion. As you've heard, it is also supported by the Advisory Committee and the Select Board. CTOS believes that by embodying this in our bylaws, we ensure that our commitment of support does not fade or become short-circuited over time as we and others in our town government come and go. So unanimously, CTOS is recommending favorable action on the legislation as now worded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boers. Dr. Homer?
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator. My name is Charles Homer. I am a town meeting member for Precinct Eight and also Chair of the Advisory Council on Public Health. I will be brief because the previous speakers have covered the matter very well. Many people are under the mistaken impression that the best way and the most important aspect of improving our health is by going to the doctor and getting good care. And in fact, those of us in public health and healthcare know that roughly 80% of our health is determined by the conditions in which we live. And among those conditions, housing is among the very most important, along with nutrition. You've already heard of the substantial burden, rent burden that our renters in our town experience. You've also seen the data, which is well-replicated. It shows both adults, and especially as a pediatrician, I would say, children suffer substantially in conditions of rent, of housing instability, particularly associated with multiple moves and homelessness. I should point out that the most common age for homelessness in the United States is age zero. That is, the first year of life. So for all these reasons, we believe strongly in the importance of the creation of an Office of Housing Stability. We appreciated from the start, and even more so now, the great flexibility that this motion provides. We have talked about the importance of addressing housing for a very long time within the Department of Public Health, and Commissioner Segal Reese has worked closely with Town Administrator Carrie in crafting the RFP, which will soon be out so that we can assess the social needs of our members of our community and identify what appropriate resources and how we can best coordinate that. So with that, I urge your passage and support for Warren Article 13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am reminded to remind folks that if you're sitting on the right-hand side of the auditorium, you need to be masked up because that is the wearing-of-masks COVID safety section. So if you are not masked and you're over there, either move to another section or put a mask on. Mr. Bassett, I see you, but unless you have a point of order, I want to hear from one more speaker. Good. So I'd like to hear from Cheryl Whites, please. And I understand that you're not a town meeting member, so you might not have done this before. So if you could just tell people your name and where you live, and then give us your remarks.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Cheryl Whites. And I'm support of Warren Article thirteen. I've been raising my two children in Brookline for over seven years as an occupational therapist at... Better? My name is Cheryl Whites. I have been raising my two children in Brookline for over seven years as an occupational therapist, at times as a substitute school staff here in Brookline. I have contributed. Here comes sad stories, sorry. But I worked throughout the pandemic in patient psych. I had a change in health status.
Yeah, that's fine if you need a moment.
I'm fine. I'm sorry. So we're in trouble without savings, and I'm the go-to support person in my family typically. So we are hoping that housing will be coming through from the city of Boston. We're two months into eviction, medical eviction, I guess. But my home community doesn't have housing help or support for my family, despite the fact we've been members of the community for, as I said, more than seven years. Both the Brookline Housing Authority and the Brookline Center misrepresent in their online presence right now, as I speak, that they have help for me, for our town's homeless and at-risk homeless. Both agencies assured me repeatedly when I had confusion that they do not. There was no office, no person they could refer me to. They became annoyed. Sorry. My rent is more than seventy percent. Our town of Brookline leaves other municipalities to pick up the pieces on every level and prefers it that way and benefits financially at the expense of less resourced communities. I consider that socially exploitive. I believe some guidance through the obfuscation that is Brookline's collectively embraced failure to help its housing insecure is the very least that Brookline could do. Currently, we don't have that. Thank you for your time and for your consideration of your community. Unfortunately, I soon won't live here anymore. Please vote yes on Article thirteen.
Thank you for coming in and sharing your experience, Ms. Boers.
Mr. Bassett, what can we do for you? First of all, tell us who you are, and then tell us what we can do for you.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator. I'm John Bassett, Precinct Six. We need this. I agree. I hope it can start July first. I look in the budget, and I don't see it listed. So I wonder, can it start July first? And which department has, where's the money?
Well, Mr. Carrie, can you enlighten us on that?
Chaz Carey, Town Administrator. Thank you for that question. We have heard, obviously, loud and clear that this is a desire of the community and something we need to work on swiftly implementing, which is why. But I think, as you can also hear from the previous speaker and from a number of things, housing is one part of a social safety net where a failure in housing is often interrelated with failures in other areas. And the provision of resources to assist, or at least to connect people to those resources, is really step one of what other communities, particularly Chelsea, have referred to as a hub-based model, this idea of being able to connect people not only to services related to housing, but services related to the other issues they may be facing, whether that is a change in status, becoming disabled, or becoming unable to find previous employment, whether that is being food insecure, whether that is having a mental health issue that prevents them from finding stable housing. All of those things need to be a portion of the response to this housing issue that affects so many people. And so in the immediate term, what I would like to do is in consultation with the Planning Department, which currently manages the Clearinghouse Resource for Housing Resources, that is on the website now, but is not easily accessible, with the Department of Health and Human Services, with the Council on Aging, and with the Veterans, the Office for Veteran Services, talk about how to make those resources that we know exist more visible and be able to connect people to the right resources, identify who those people are, and have that start. Concurrently, the Director of Public Health is putting out, in early, the first week of July is our target, this request for proposals to identify, to really connect, identify what services are easily provitable in Brookline, not just housing, but across the social safety net, so that we can build out something that connects the needs that have been identified in, for example, BCF's upcoming report, which I do out next week that I would encourage people to read, but also the needs assessment that we conducted, I believe, back in 2021, finding out who provides those services and how best at a local, regional, and even statewide level to connect them. All of this is a long way of saying, in the immediate term, we want to amp up the visibility of what we know is available. In the mid to long term, we want to build out that social safety, that social safety net and that hub model of connecting people, not just to the housing resources they need, but to the other resources they need to be secure in their housing.
Thank you. Are you saying that you'll get it done this year?
I don't think the mid to long term is going to be this year. I think it's going to be twelve to eighteen months, I think. But in the immediate term, obviously, if this Warren article passes, we hear the mandate of town meeting, and we will work to effectuate what we have and maximize that outreach now while working concurrently to build out that hub-based model.
Thank you.
Were you at the microphone over there?
I've been at Priestley, Precinct Four. I myself am a real estate agent, and I work a lot with the community here. I will be voting favorable action for this. It is really hard, especially for families of middle to low income, because you have to come up with four months of rent upfront to move. This is a challenge, especially for single parents or one-family households. You know, speaking from experience, I've done a lot of community service in this. So I suggest you guys to please vote favorable action in this. The help is needed.
Do you have a comment or a question?
Both.
Okay, tell us who you are and give us your comment and your question. This is not as easy as it looks, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm John Hebert, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. The comment is about the language in the warrant article and in the supplements. And there's some ambiguity in here that I'd like to try to clear up or find out if it is, if it applies as broadly as I would like it to. In the executive summary, for example, it says that the new bylaw will create an office of housing stability within a town department to be determined by the town administrator, which would provide assistance to Brookline residents at risk of housing displacement, et cetera. In the introductory statement, it says the Advisory Committee agrees with petitioners that the town needs to do more to help residents who are at risk of eviction and displacement from their rental apartment, and to provide Brookline residents with a centralized, coordinated, and guided information and referral system. So I would like to point out, and I'm sure that everybody would realize, that housing stability doesn't just apply to renters, that housing stability applies to landlords, it applies to homeowners as well. They have more options than renters, but if they're, if a landlord is risking, has renters who are unable to pay, well, then they're at risk. And that idea of housing stability, I would say, I would suggest, applies to them as well. So, and I have an anecdote that I could relate, but...
Well, before we get into anecdotes, how about your question?
Fine. Well, the question is, does the, would the, will this office of housing stability apply equally to all residents?
And I'm going to call on Mr. Boers from CTOs, since you guys carefully crafted the language that we're voting on tonight.
Let me say, we edited the language.
Hey, you folks carefully edited the language that we are voting on.
And I'm not an attorney. So we understood it as applying to everyone. In fact, we did hear from, I don't know if it was a landlord, but I think a landlord's agent, who discussed how important it was to have something like this to reach. Can you hear, is that better? Sorry. As we had heard from, and I don't think it was a landlord, I think it was a landlord's agent, about the importance of having this office, or whatever you want to call it, for tenants that they were dealing with, because it was an issue for the landlords as well as the tenants, as you pointed out. I think in our review of this, we understood it was applicable to everybody. You know, we've also heard of people who are on fixed income and their housing instability. But clearly, the big pressure does seem to be with rental housing. But we understood it forever.
That, I think that's as much of an answer as we have for you today.
Yeah, I think it's an adequate answer. Thank you.
Okay. Before I go back to folks at the microphones, I'm going to call on one more speaker who had signed up, Jessica Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Ryan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Sixteen. I have no financial interest in this. This evening, I hope to add a different perspective, and that is one of a landlord. I have worked in projects across the United States, the greater Boston area, for over, for the last twenty years. During my career, I've had the opportunity of acting as an agent on behalf of property owners in the housing industry, communities that have an office of housing stability and communities that do not. And I'm here to tell you that an office of housing stability benefits responsible landlords tremendously. You see, when we are in the business of providing shelter, displacing residents through a court-ordered eviction is your last means of action. Domestic violence, severe illness, sudden disability that leads to long-term hospitalization, job loss, death of a family member, mental illness, these are the reasons that people come to us when they can't pay their rent. When a housing provider finds themselves with a tenant facing this type of diversity, the easiest thing for us to do is pick up the phone and call an office of housing stability to ensure that they're given the resources that they need. An office of housing stability reduces the risk of financial losses to landlords by avoiding the need to even file legal evictions in the first place. During the pandemic, when regulations were changing almost daily, responsible landlords relied on notifications from an office of housing stability almost daily to ensure that we did not unknowingly, even with the best intentions, make a misstep because a regulation had changed. There is no such notification for responsible landlords in Brookline. You've heard how, in the absence of housing stability, or in the dedicated town department, how many residents have found themselves in situations who are trying to face difficulties when they need assistance? Well, I challenge town administration tonight because recently, very recently, I have been connected with a number of tenants and have provided them services based on my professional experiences to help them avoid evictions. One was a recent, was a Brookline Public Schools power professional who's facing homelessness after a roommate moved out. They were distraught after applying for a Section Eight voucher program and were denied. I was able to review their income, explain to this person that they, in fact, qualified for an income-restricted unit at fifty percent AMI under the Inclusionary Housing Program.
I'm sorry, but thirty-second warning.
Today, there is no one at Town Hall that can explain the difference of a subsidized housing program and inclusionary housing. Mr. Warren spoke on the importance of making Brookline a destination employer. I wholeheartedly agree, but housing stability must be a top priority for all of our workforce as we move forward to make this a reality. I ask you tonight to support the amended article. Every day that goes by without this office in place, Brookline continues to cater to the landlords that do not want to play by the rules and the attorneys that generate billable hours defending them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, are you at the microphone? You are at the microphone. Well, come on up and tell us who you are and what you'd like to share.
Thank you. Donald O'Neill, Senior, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four, AC. Question and a comment, please, if I may.
Sure.
So my question is, the Town Administrator, knowing all the departments you mentioned on collaboration, is, does twelve to eighteen months really sound doable? Or is that just, you know what I mean? Like, can you, do you need to extend that time? Do you think that's enough time?
Mr. O'Neill, I would point out very friendly and politely that, of course, all the questions have to be directed to whoever at the podium. And I only say that because otherwise Ms. Poverbit and Mr. Gadsden will make fun of me and tell me that I should have told you that. However, Mr. Carrie, could you answer Mr. O'Neill's question?
Sorry. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Chaz Carey, Town Administrator. Thank you. The twelve to eighteen-month timeline is for that analysis of what we have, you know, what the resources that are available to us. It's my hope that we can be collaborative and effective in building that out, you know, building the plane as we attempt to fly it. But I also want to make sure that we do this right. I don't want to give people a false hope that overnight we can build something out that is going to provide that high level of high-touch social services that it requires. We don't have that capacity yet, and we need to figure out how to provide that carefully within the tight constraints of our budget. But we want to think creatively about how we can maximize the amount of service we can provide. And in order to do that, we need to have an understanding of what the resources available to us are. We know that people have talked about the build-out of other communities. Somerville's took a number of years. Malden's was rapid, but Malden spent ARPA money doing, which means that they now have an unfunded mandate place when that money goes away. We want, if we want to do this, we got to do it right. So that timeline is for the, you know, to, in order to ensure that we have the proper inventory of services available, and then think creatively about how we are connecting. I also know that this is a matter that many members of the community have dedicated I also know that this is a matter that many members of the community have dedicated a lot of time to thinking about. We want to work collaboratively with them as well. So it's my hope, I don't know what that timeline is going to look like, but I will hope to keep Town Meeting regularly apprised of how that work is going.
Thank you so much for the clarification, Chad. Thank you.
Mr. Sandman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sandman, Select Board. I realize that there are a number of very powerful speeches yet to be made, but I do get a sense that Town Meeting has made up its mind on this in a positive way, and therefore I call the question.
Hi. This, there is one Town Meeting member who's been patiently standing at the microphone. So before I decide whether to take a motion to call the question, do you have a question or a comment?
I have a question. Thank you.
Okay, I will take your question and then I will take Mr. Sandman's.
Quite, quite, it's a point of order, actually.
It's a point of order. Well, then I have to take it. Okay, what is your point of order?
David Escrie, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. I'm not clear about what we're going to be voting here. I see several motions to refer to the town administrator. And also, but I'm not sure on the position of the petitioner themselves, are we going to? If we vote to refer, then we're not creating the bylaw section point 312. But if we, if we're able to vote on the petitioner's motion, then that does end up in the.
Remarkably enough, I, remarkably enough, I can, I can answer that question.
Yes.
Okay. Events have overtaken you, and I don't fault you for that because the supplements have been flying fa, flying fast and furiously. Up until recently, there were the petitioner's motion, and there were three different referral motions that would have referred it to two different places and one of the same places, but with additional conditions. However, due to the intelligence, good humor, and hard work of everyone involved, everyone got on the same page. So there is only one motion. It appears on the supplement, page, supplement five, page three. It was edited by the Committee on Town Organization and Structure, agreed to and adopted by the petitioner, Ms. Wu. So everybody's on the same page. We have one hopefully simple vote to create an office of housing stability as set forth on supplement five, page three. If that doesn't solve your question, I'm sorry, I don't know anybody who knows the answer then. Mr. Black, did you have a, a question or a?
A point of order.
Okay. What is your point of order, Mr. Black? And tell us who you are, even though I already figured it out.
Ryan Black, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. And firstly, thank you for the skillful moderation of this and everyone's contributions thus far. I just want to know, I believe people who have signed up in advance have maybe, by complete accident, and I don't think any malice, have, you know, had people skip ahead of them at the mic. And again, I've appreciated people's contributions, but I just want to know, I think people have signed up in advance and, you know, they were bumped down and.
Let me, let me explain how that works. You're, you're correct factually. The moderator, whoever presiding over the stuff, has discretion to interrupt the signed up speakers and take questions or comments from the floor, particularly questions after a certain number of folks have spoken and then return back to signed up speakers. In this case, there are, as you may have figured out, no speakers signed up in opposition. A number of speakers signed up to speak in favor, whose names I will give. And of course, it will be up to Town Meeting. But under those circumstances and using the moderator's discretion, I thought that if some Town Meeting members who hadn't paid as close attention as the people involved in this had, had questions, it would be a good idea to make sure they got answered. But I take your point of order, Mr. Black. That was my thinking. So with that, we now have, I assume, Mr. Sandman, you're making your motion to call the question. I heard a second out there. Yeah, okay. Let me tell you who's signed up to speak. So still to be heard from would be Mr. Lebovitz, who would be reading the remarks of Town Meeting Member Kimberly Richardson, who unfortunately was ill and could not attend in person, had been signed up to speak. Danielle De Silva, Amy Newell, Carlos Rios, Bonnie Bastian, Carolyn Thall, Chris Muddy, Michael Kushner, Naomi Schweitzer, Jonathan Klein, Scott Ananian. I'm pretty sure I didn't leave anybody out, but, oh, good. And there is no one signed up to speak against this. So we will have a vote on a motion to call the question. It'll be a recorded vote. It requires a two thirds majority. Are you ready? All right, a head warp factor one. Math was not my strong suit, but the motion to terminate debate carries 159 yes and 60 no's. So we will proceed to a vote on the main motion, which again is on supplement five, page three, to create an office of housing stability. It only requires a majority vote. And are we ready to vote? Okay. Let's do, oh, we're doing it. The motion carries 223 yes, one no, and three abstentions. And with that, I will yield the podium back to Madam Moderator.
I'm not quite as tall as Mr. Karen, so. We will now turn to Article 20. Article 20 relates to reproductive and gender health access and equity. You can find it on 2010 to 2012 of the combined reports. It is brought by Rebecca Stone and seconded by Catherine Florio. First speaking is Rebecca Stone, who has five minutes. The next speakers are already close to the podium, so you don't need to come up. But again, I remind people that if your mask is on, it means it needs to be over your mouth and nose. So if you're in the right hand side. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Rebecca Stone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and member of the Commission for Women, speaking for the Commission as lead petitioners. Before I begin, Mr. Karen, I want to thank all the co-petitioners on this article with special thanks to the health professionals who joined us because they, along with colleagues across the state and the country, continue, excuse me, providing safe and compassionate care every day despite the rising threats against them. Just before the Dobbs decision was announced last summer, I was at a conference and a male colleague, husband to a primary care physician and father to a daughter who was about to become an OB-GYN, calmly and comfortably told me that he didn't think Roe being overturned would be that big a deal. He was very wrong. The Dobbs decision precipitated immediate and dramatic restrictions on reproductive and gender related healthcare around the country, a breathtaking array of restrictions on access to healthcare, education, personal and economic freedom, bodily autonomy, and privacy. This new broadside against women and the LGBTQ community is frankly terrifying. According to Reproductive Equity Now, 19 states have banned abortion with 13 enacting complete bans. Not a big deal. These new laws mean that as many as 33 million persons capable of becoming pregnant, pregnant do not or soon will not have access to safe abortion services. Healthcare providers, patients, and those assisting patients in seeking care may now be subject to criminal prosecution from those care banning states, even, even if the care provided or received is here in Massachusetts. Doctors, hospital administrators, pharmacists, and patients alike are confused and afraid, and vital care is being denied as a consequence with devastating results. In the first six months after Dobbs, there were 32,000 fewer legal abortions nationwide, which even if you allow for other explanations for that, means that thousands of people are being forced by their state governments to carry unwanted, unviable, and even life threatening pregnancies to term. Pregnant people are traveling farther than ever before for care if they can arrange and afford to travel at all. Many cannot. Federal judges have attempted to block the use of a drug called Mifepristone, a drug used safely for decades by millions of people, both in medication abortion and in treatment of incomplete miscarriages. This June, we are celebrating Pride Month against the backdrop of state bans on gender affirming care and even discussion of homosexuality in schools. Most chilling, maternal deaths are also rising rapidly in states with abortion restrictions, especially in communities of color where maternal morbidity and mortality rates were already disproportionately high. We are lucky to be in Massachusetts with the Roe Act and last year's law expanding patient and provider protections. But state laws rely on vigorous local enforcement for legitimacy and for impact. We as petitioners believe that the town has a special responsibility to make a clear, explicit commitment to do that local enforcement. We modeled it on Salem's recent ordinance, and Article 20 provides that clarity of intent, action, and consequence. It creates a section in our bylaws recognizing and affirming reproductive and gender health as an area of local policy concern and action and making space for other related policies such as Brookline's Menstrual Product Access Bylaw, as well as any future actions we wish or need to take. Second, and the centerpiece of the article is its safe haven provision, an explicit commitment to support and protect from harassing litigation those seeking and providing safe, compassionate pregnancy or gender affirming care, including legal abortion. For the medical professionals who joined as co-petitioners, the section of the bylaw that outlines consequences for anyone who knowingly violates these provisions is what makes this article far stronger than a resolution would be. I know there are some who still see a bylaw as unnecessary, given the Commonwealth's strong state laws. But please remember that less than a year ago, much of what has happened in this country was unanticipated and to many thought unthinkable, especially the attempts to impose a nationwide ban by banning the use of Mifepristone. We simply cannot assume that the rights and protections we enjoy here right now will not be challenged in ways we haven't anticipated. For that, we need to put guardrails in place at the local level, and that is what Article 20 does. Please join me, the Commission for Women, the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the Advisory Committee on Public Health, the Select Board, the School Committee, Brookline PACs, and a nearly unanimous advisory committee in voting favorable action. Thank you.
Catherine Florio. Speaking for the Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Catherine Florio, Precinct 10, speaking for the Advisory Committee on Warrant Article 20, Create a New Bylaw Section titled Reproductive and Gender Health Access and Equity. There is a growing threat to safe, established reproductive care in Massachusetts in spite of the recent passage of the two state statutes. First, the Roe Act in 2020, which protects access to abortion in Massachusetts. And second, in 2022, an act expanding protections for reproductive and gender affirming care, which provides legal protections to abortion providers and out of state patients, expands access to contraception and allows women to receive care in Massachusetts to treat dangerous late term pregnancies. A local bylaw is necessary, as Ms. Stone just outlined, because of the unexpected nature of so many new challenges to all aspects of reproductive and gender affirming care. Building strong local laws now will establish guardrails against what may come next. Petitioners remind us that in 1994, Brookline was the local, was the location of shootings at two local clinics, acts that permanently changed reproductive healthcare for women in Brookline and in Massachusetts. The discussion in the full advisory committee was centered on two concerns. The first regarding the language of the bylaw in relation to town employees. And second was a bylaw, the correct approach. Concern was expressed that a town employee could be censored for simply doing their job as they understood it and proposed with the approval of the petitioners, ensuring that only knowing violations of the new bylaw would be subject to any action. The Director of Human Resources, who was in attendance, stated that she had no objections to the amended version of the article with respect to requirements imposed by this warrant article on town employees. The argument given against a local bylaw were first, that the behavior of town employees is already regulated by the state statute. And second, that town employees were subject to town employment policies which require town employees to enforce state laws. The arguments given for a local bylaw supported petitioner's statements regarding unforeseen challenges to reproductive freedom and the need for a local response with T. Further, that by creating local accountability, this bylaw would strengthen enforcement and that it would provide further support if an employee might need it to withstand pressure from family, friends, or faith based organizations to facilitate litigation from out of state. An example was provided of an employee receiving a phone call or an email requesting information about local healthcare practitioners, the existence of or address for local clinics, or for information regarding the availability of certain medications at local pharmacies. This information may appear innocent, but it could be used by entities in another state to build a legal case against a local resident, local healthcare practitioner, or against a person who is receiving medical care or was accompanying someone who's receiving medical care in Massachusetts. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article 20 by a vote of 23 in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
Ms. Ashkenazi. Ms. Frias will be next.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Miriam Ashkenazi, speaking on behalf of the Select Board, who voted four to zero favorable action as amended. Article 20, as you have heard, is a petition to amend the town's general bylaws to reaffirm the town's commitment to reproductive and gender health across, gender health access and equity, including by establishing the town as a safe haven for access to reproductive and gender affirming healthcare. On Friday, June 22nd, 2022, the U.S. Supreme Court overturned Roe versus Wade, the landmark piece of legislation that made access to abortion a federal right in the United States. This opened the door for individual states to limit or outright ban abortion, which is exactly what happened and is continuing to happen. Several states go so far as to criminalize providers and those seeking care, even if they do it out of state. Most of us are familiar by now with the story of the 10. Most of us are familiar by now with the story of the ten-year-old, ten-year-old Ohio rape victim, a young girl who had to travel to Indiana to get an abortion. The physician who performed the procedure saved this little girl's life. Make no mistake, a ten-year-old body is not prepared to carry to term and deliver a baby. This little girl relied upon the ability to cross state lines to receive a life-saving abortion. Currently, fifty-eight percent of women ages thirteen to forty-four live in a state hostile or extremely hostile to abortion rights, and the laws to prevent and limit abortion continue to grow. Article 20 would protect people coming to Brookline from a hostile state to seek abortion care and protect providers in Brookline from being held in custody or extradited for providing reproductive or gender-affirming healthcare services. The article would also enforce consequences for any town agent or employee found to be in violation of these provisions. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has already established itself as a safe haven for reproductive care and access following the signing into law of an act expanding protections for reproductive and gender-affirming care by the governor in July of 2022. But this bylaw amendment would make a clear and unambiguous commitment to enforcing the state's safe haven laws in the town of Brookline, and it sends the message that we are going to continue to fight for women's reproductive rights and freedom. A unanimous Select Board voted four-zero for favorable action on this motion offered by the Advisory Committee.
Valerie Frias.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Valerie Frias, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, and School Committee Member, speaking on behalf of the School Committee, a unanimous School Committee. I will be brief. My co-petitioners and colleagues have stated the position eloquently. School Committee supports this new bylaw as part of the town of Brookline's commitment to reproductive and gender health and equity for all residents. Massachusetts has some of the strongest reproductive health access laws in the nation, but enforcement of those laws relies upon the informed cooperation of those on the municipal level. As integral members of the Brookline community, we strongly affirm our commitment to the health and safety of all residents, including students, teachers, and staff in the public schools of Brookline through the passage of Warren Article 20. In accordance with Warren Article 20, upon passage, the School Committee will also look to adopt policy to ensure that we comply with all of the requirements of Warren Article 20, specifically the Menstrual Product Access section of the bylaw. Again, with unanimous vote of the School Committee, recommend favorable action on Warren Article 20.
Thank you. I call Janice Smith to the microphone. Ms. Smith. And after Ms. Smith will be Mr. Levovitz and Mr. Ischak, if you want to come to the front. Come to the podium, please.
Hello, Virginia Smith, Precinct 6. My friend Felina Silver Robinson was not able to be here in person, and she asked that we play a recording of her ideas on this issue.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow town meeting members. My name is Felina Silver Robinson. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 3, as well as the Chair for the Brookline Commission for Women. I am speaking to you as all of those, but also as a mother of five daughters and one son. As you know, back in July of 2022, the Governor of Massachusetts signed into law an act expanding protections for reproductive and gender-affirming care. With that being said, I look to you, we look to you today, for support in making sure that those who are seeking help continue to have the right to help and that they are not victimized in any way, sought after for going within their rights. And although that we know that the town has compelling governmental interest in promoting public health and protections for people seeking and providing reproductive healthcare services against the harassment and legal penalties from the states where such services have been curtailed, eliminated, and or criminalized, we want to ensure that all of that is protected. And if we need more support from our police departments, that they get the help that is needed, and that we as a community, if we see something happening that shouldn't be happening, we make sure to report it so that all parties are safe within this community and that everyone who is deserving of attention and services is allowed to get those services. Please support us by voting to pass warrant Article 20. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Levovitz.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alec Levovitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. And let me begin by taking a brief moment to thank the Brookline Commission for Women, and in particular their Chair Rebecca Stone, for their fearless leadership in the face of these unprecedented attacks. Our community and all of us have been made safer through your actions and your steadfast advocacy, and we thank you. Few issues demand our attention as representatives and lawmakers more than the appalling campaign to endanger pregnant patients and trans youth and adults occurring in state houses across the nation. By banning or restricting necessary medical procedures, including abortion care and gender-affirming care, state legislatures in dozens of states seek to strip away the rights and endanger the lives of women, LGBTQ plus people, and patients whose only crime was seeking routine healthcare. Now, while we cannot change the laws of other states, what we can do is choose how Brookline will respond to these draconian laws. Warren Article 20 would put in place local protections for residents and for patients who travel to Brookline to receive reproductive or gender-affirming healthcare by making it clear that no town employee or agent will be permitted to participate in the prosecution or legal harassment of patients or those who assist patients in seeking care here in Brookline. Other states are constitutionally banned from being able to compel our town to assist in their efforts to punish patients or medical refugees. Still, by making non-cooperation the stated policy of the town, we send a clear message to our residents, to providers, and to our town employees importantly, that Brookline remains a safe haven. A stated policy removes ambiguity that could result in confusion or incidental cooperation by a town department or agent, offering our town staff certainty as well as patients for potentially tricky legal situations that may arise and cannot be foreseen. A close analog to this policy exists in the immigration sphere. Over the past decade, many communities have adopted sanctuary city policies, which clarified that local law enforcement and municipal agencies would not cooperate with federal immigration enforcement. This provided a legal avenue for cities to live their values, to protect vulnerable populations, and to mitigate the impacts of often cruel and inhumane immigration policies. This example provides us the roadmap to live our values and to stand up for the rights of vulnerable residents and visitors to our community seeking care. I urge you to join the diverse and large group of petitioners and the many boards and commissions that have supported making Brookline a safe haven and vote favorable action on Warren Article 20. Let's send a message together tonight and keep our community safe for everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Ischak.
Anthony Ischak, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1, and also a co-petitioner. Speak to you today from my daytime job. I'm a pharmacist in primary care working in internal medicine. There's two points I would like to bring up briefly for you today. Today I speak to you about dignity. This bylaw proposal goes directly to dignity and a person's ability to choose what is best for them. This bylaw speaks to preserving the sacred discussion that occurs between all providers and their patients about what is best for them and the healthcare decisions that they make that they think is best for them. This bylaw proposes to keep that discussion sacred. All providers, nurses, physicians, pharmacists, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, pretty much any healthcare career that you can name takes an oath when they graduate that they will work with patients to do the best that they can to make the best decision together. This bylaw preserves this. Second thing that I would like to bring up, this position for men in general is a chance to fight back. Most of the proposals that have occurred across this country are about men taking away the voice of women and others to speak for what is best for them. Think our point today is that as men, we don't stand here to mute the voices, but to let them have their voices. So I would ask for your support on this bylaw. Thank you very much.
Having no more speakers, we will now vote on Article 20, which is whether to amend the bylaw that currently exists on menstrual hygiene product access and amend it to relate to reproductive and gender health access and equity. It needs to pass by a majority vote, and we will drop the vote now. The motion passes, two hundred and seventeen yes, zero no, and eight abstentions. We are now turning to Article 18. Article 18 seeks to increase penalties for violations relating to the storage and removal of garbage. It applies to food vendors, single-family, two-family, and three-unit buildings. It is found on Pages 18-6 to 18-11 of the combined reports. It is brought by Mr. Levovitz and Mr. Ischak, talking on a totally different subject than you just heard them speak on. And I will ask Mr. Levovitz to speak first. I will ask Mr. Ischak to speak first.
Anthony Ischak, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Everyone is familiar with the Paul Warren article that helped foster the Rodent Control Action Plan and increased discussion around funding for waste resources. Tonight, I am here speaking to you regarding another Warren article that provides synergy to that plan and helps uphold our health and sanitation standards. You remember, last fall, we discussed parks and the impact on rats? A lot of our residents brought up the impact of restaurants and other businesses that don't take care of their sanitation. This is meant to address it. Although rats spurred the action, this Warren article was needed in general. Neighbors who aren't following sanitary waste guidelines are the ones impacted by this Warren article. Improperly securing waste can lead wildlife, rats in our case, bears and raccoons in other cases, to come into communities impacting not only residential life, but other businesses that are following the law. Sixty percent of rodent complaints in Brookline last year were related to commercial areas. This helps to address the problem. Rats stay within a hundred meters, three hundred feet for those of us used to an American measurement system, of their consistent food supply. This is a safe, healthy solution to preventing rats from congregating and eating. Perhaps the education that follows from this bylaw will convince restaurants to think more holistically about their waste management. As a study has shown, a seven-dollar return for every dollar spent on waste management, this is an important factor in an industry that has narrow margins. This is also an environmental factor. There's an environmental lens component to food waste, which accounts for eight percent of greenhouse gases worldwide. A Washington Post article from October best summarizes why proper sanitation is needed aside from the acute rat infestation issue. Bobby Corrigan is a world-famous rodentologist. Quote, "Restaurants are famous for not spending what it takes to get rid of rats," unquote. They often choose low-price rodent control instead of hiring a company that's got a plan to catch, kill, and prevent rats from getting in at all. This is what Corrigan has said. His advice to consumers is to check whether a restaurant is clean enough to eat at by recommending that you check their back alleys. They're not taking care of the back of the house. Those are probably the same sanitation standards they apply to the rest of their work, unfortunately to the food that probably comes to our tables. Restaurants have good sanitation practices. Experts have agreed, and they generally have good sanitation throughout. I would highlight that one of the other things that would be important to think about is to name these offenders. Multiple towns and cities have sanitation standards that are posted in those restaurant windows as to what they have done with inspections, central areas where consumers can find it. I think it would be helpful for us to consider having that same type of resource for our consumers, where they know ahead of time where they're going to eat and the standards they take care of for their food preparation. So I would ask that you would vote favorable action on this Warren article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony, for that context. I'm going to speak a little bit more to the actual article itself.
Who are you?
I'm Alec Levovitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Warren Article 18 is a very straightforward measure that gives town meeting the opportunity to take action in support of the ongoing efforts of DPW and DPH to implement the Rodent Control Action Plan. Specifically, the article would amend the bylaws to increase the fines for violations of the refuse, storage, and disposal bylaws by both food vendors and owners of single, two, and three-unit residences. The updated fines would be structured in such a way to increase repeated violations in order to provide a stronger enforcement tool for town departments to bring frequent offenders into compliance and to prevent an undue burden from being placed on owners who are unaware of the bylaws or make a single isolated mistake. The new fine schedule for food vendors would be $100 for a first violation, $200 for a second violation, and $300 state limited maximum for a third or subsequent violation. For single, two, and three-unit residences, the fine schedule would be $25 for a first violation, 50 for a second, and 150 for third and subsequent violations. The article would also clarify that fines may be assessed daily until an offender comes into compliance to be levied at the discretion of the enforcing town department. This proposal was born out of enforcement data and constituent feedback that showed that a high percentage of refuse fines levied against food vendors were repeat violations, and that a relatively small number of repeat offenders were contributing disproportionately to the rat problem by frequently leaving out unsecured food waste. After consulting with Commissioner Gallantyne and Commissioner Reese, increased fine schedules for single, two, and three-unit residences were also incorporated to offer a stronger enforcement tool for the departments to deal with an increasing number of violations by such residences. We believe that these proposed fines strike a comfortable balance between strengthening enforcement while, again, not placing an undue burden on residences of small unit residences. Further, the policy of both DPW and DPH in enforcing our current bylaws has consistently been to lead with education and warnings to property owners and food vendors that commit violations. With this practice in place, Warren Article 18 will effectively only increase fines on owners who choose to ignore the warnings and compliance education offered by our town department. With that, I ask that you vote favorable action on Warren Article 18. Thank you.
Mr. Doggett.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. John Doggett, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, and speaking for a unanimous advisory committee. Warren Article 18 seeks to increase fines of town and health department violations concerning waste storage for both food establishments and single-family, two-family, and three-family residences. As part of the three-pronged approach to As part of the three-pronged approach to improve rodent control by the DPW and the health departments, the petitioners hope that the increase in fines will help improve compliance with the bylaws and regulations enforced by those departments, thereby reducing amounts of food waste that the rats have access to. Enforcement by both the DPW and the health department is complaint-driven and relies greatly on educating the violators as to the applicable laws and regulations. These enforcement procedures are administered by the DPW, who work hard with violators with warnings and education to reach compliance without fines if possible. The DPW commissioner does believe that the increase in fines will be compelling for repeat offenders. The advisory committee members expressed support for the Rodent Control Action Plan being implemented by the DPW and health departments and were disposed to increase the fines as part of that program. There were concerns expressed over the lack of transparency of the existing bylaws and the health department regulations, which are somewhat opaque and hard to find. Both Commissioner Gallantyne and Health Commissioner Reese sent a joint letter to the committee to clarify many of the concerns that the members had noted. The committee particularly welcomed the DPW commissioner's plan to provide increased education and an updated sanitation program guide, which will improve violation clarity and emphasize proper waste management procedures. The advisory committee voted favorable action on Warren Article 18 by a vote of 25 to 0 to 0. Thank you.
Regina Fraley.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Regina Fraley from Precinct 16. And I bow to no one in knowing my precinct. We are roughly half-single-family houses. Almost no such thing as a two or three-family in my precinct. And the rest are units of Hancock Village. Over now 1,700 units. We have rats in South Brookline, but we didn't. It all came out of the Hancock Village not dumping its dumpsters adequately, and we filed more complaints than I could hold a stick to. If you want to do the kind of fine, go to the place where you have it. You don't have it from my neighbors. We are the ones who are hiring people to exterminate because it came from there. When they did the blasting for two and a half years, then they really upset the warrens of the rats. So I don't think that you should be voting to include, and I'm not sure how to do it, Madam Moderator, to remove single families. I can't speak with authority to two or three families. Maybe some here can. But I can tell you, the problem has not been my single-family homeowners. It's been the multi-unit Hancock Village. And I'm sure that I won't speak to the restaurants. Again, that's not my expertise, but I have expertise in my precinct for single-family, and this should be excluded. So if I can do a motion to exclude single-family homes until there's more evidence coming from the DPW specific, otherwise, we're voting on just a generic kind of concept and not the evidence that we should have, like in any court that you are the jury on. Thank you.
Here's what I would recommend. Since motions to amend must be filed 48 hours in advance to give people notice that they will be considering the subject. What I would recommend is if this motion passes, that you file an article in the November Town Meeting to amend it. We have no more speakers, although I see somebody. Two people. Oh, my God, yes. Ms. Ashkenazi. And then people are approaching the podium. I apologize. Does Ischak Levovitz switch the toast totally through me?
It's my night. These will be gratefully short, I'm sure. Warren Article 18, refuse fees. The select board, Mary Mashkenazi, speaking on behalf of the select board that voted 4-0 as amended. As you've heard, Article 18 is petition to amend the town's general bylaws to increase fines for improper handling of refuse and to escalate these fines for repeated violations for food establishments and owners of single, two, and three-unit residences up to the maximum amount allowable under state law. This article does not change the process for issuing citations. The Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Health have developed a Rodent Control Action Plan that suggests reviewing the bylaws relative to the handling of refuse. While these departments typically prioritize education on refuse handling over issuing citations, this article would specifically address violations for repeat offenders, repeat offenders, that may not have been receptive to the town's cooperation in resolving these issues. By the way, Melissa put that very nicely. I wouldn't have been so nice. Unanimous Select Board voted 4-0 for favorable action on the motion offered by the petitioners. That's it.
Thank you. Again, I will number our microphones. One to your far left, two to the second one, three to this one here, and four to the one on your far right. The person at microphone three, I am recognizing you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Judith Vanderkay, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, and Library Trustee. I want to urge this body to move favorable action on this warrant article. There was one visitor that we just had. I'm sure he wanted to speak against the article, but I shrieked and he ran away. I hope that these little incidents will become less frequent as the results of our favorable action on this warrant article take effect. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Fran Perler, Precinct 8. I also am one of the co-authors of the rodent mitigation petition that had over 1,200 signatures. And in that process, I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of people and get emails now almost every week. The largest complaint that people have is repeat offenders. And my interactions with DPW and health departments say the fines just aren't enough to make them care. That's number one. Number two, in response to the previous statement, there are single families that just don't do the right thing. I should point out that the health department and DPW educates, and I have had numerous examples of people telling me that they've gotten literature and they've been told to clean up. They've told how to clean up. And so they're not going to be fined unless they do it substantially repeatedly. And just to make my last comment, the largest repeat offender for solid waste disposal is the town of Brookline in our dumpsters and our trash cans on public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone three, you are now in the spotlight.
Hi, Town Meeting Member, Bitsy Proman, Precinct 6. I have a question, which is how does this Warren article interact with people's choice to do backyard composting? And I guess to give my personal view on backyard composting, we live in an area that's far too dense for it to make any sense. Obviously, I'd like people to be composting, however.
So is your question, how does?
How does it interact with people's backyard compost?
I do not know who to call on for this question. Head of DPW, Ms. Gallantyne? Okay, thank you.
Erin Jude Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. It does not, it does not change anything as it relates to home composting, and we encourage you to do it.
Ms. Thol.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Carolyn Thol, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 16. I have a quick question and then another question. In Mr. Levovitz's presentation, I think, and I feel like I'm seeing two different references in different places. Some of the references and descriptions of this Warren article are to single, two, and three-family residences, but I think the regulations speak to a different category for residences of more than three units. Sorry if that's not clear, but I'm confused at why it stops at three.
Mr. Levovitz.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alec Levovitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. So the fines for these different kinds of dwellings are established separately in the bylaws in Article 10. It was the case before we introduced this article that for dwellings of four units or more, the fine structure actually mirrors what we are proposing tonight for restaurants. So it already was escalating up till that state-mandated maximum of $300 for third and subsequent offenses. So you might argue we're actually bringing our bylaws for other types of residences more in line with how multifamily residences are currently treated. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. And then I have a question that I think will be for Ms. Gallantyne or Ms. Reese. So this Warren article seeks to increase the penalties for improper handling of refuse. And I'm sure it makes sense in some ways to increase the fines for refuse management offenses. I'm going to talk about Hancock Village again. It is many hundreds of units, and trash has been a big issue there. So what we've experienced at Hancock Village right now is that the regulations to which the fines are applied, in our view, are not sufficient. And the systems required at the planning level are insufficient. They're not specific or measurable enough. And the systems for trash management that are in place are not being enforced at the health department or building department level. Though the experience is that the town has failed to help Hancock Village residents, all of them renters, of course, by failing to enforce state sanitary code and our own regulations. So fines won't address these root problems. So I'm wondering.
Actually, you ask me, and I determine who goes.
Thank you. So I'm wondering if any work is happening to adjust the guidelines to better fit the needs in addition to adding fines.
I'm sorry, this article doesn't address that particular issue. I think you are, I think you are asking who is responsible for enforcing?
No, what I'm really getting at is what the regulations are to which the fines are applied. So whether there's any work being done to adjust the regulations themselves to better address
Okay.
the problems that we face
Ms. Gallantyne?
with management of refuse.
Erin Jude Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. So Director Reese, her team and my team have been working on updating the solid waste regulations that govern the handling, storage, collection, and disposal of waste in the town of Brookline. We've provided our edits. It's actually gone through town council's office, and then we'll be looking for some public comment on those regulations before we finalize them. But I think to your to your major concerns, the new regulations really focus on dumpsters and defining dumpsters, proper storage containment of those dumpsters, which I think will add a lot of clarity in terms of what is permissible, what isn't, and we'll be able to, you know, allow the, basically enforce that. We also are looking at private hauler responsibilities and overall storage. So I think it will be a significant improvement.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Bass? Bassett?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Composting, I thought the answer.
I'm sorry, who are you, since I've changed your name?
Precinct 6. I thought the question about composting that Ms. Pearlman asked was good, and the answer was incomplete. I have an open composting pile on the edge of the woods in Rockport. It produces buckets, buckets of wonderful dirt. I would not do that here. It seems to me that this that this bylaw should prohibit that kind of open composting pile up in Rockport. I get lots of little visitors. We don't want that here. I think the intent of this is to discourage and prohibit open composting.
Okay, that is a comment. But it doesn't.
It's really a question, I think.
I mean, your question is asking why it doesn't address composting. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Gallantyne said it doesn't affect composting at all, and I believe it does.
No, well, no, it does not address composting. Ms. Gallantyne, I mean, the article as read does not affect composting. And I will let Ms. Gallantyne see if that is her interpretation of the article as well. Or assistant, I'll give her a minute to address this, but that.
So Erin Jude Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. And if this is incomplete, I think Director Reese could follow up. But it's really the state sanitary code. So if there is a nuisance condition that is reported to Public Works or the Department of Public Health, where there is a situation where there are significant rodents, that is something that the Department of Health would then inspect and see if it is, if it's problematic and if it needs remedy. It, I suppose, could be open composting. That is not something that the Department of Public Works has responded to. That has not been anything that we have been called to inspect and enforce. But I suppose if there was any situation that was causing a nuisance for the neighborhood under the sanitary code, health department could inspect, work with that homeowner, and enforce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hebert?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Hebert, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. As ever, I have a comment and a question. The comment is that I think that this is a very good article. I'm concerned about the enforcement of it. And I believe that that if enforcement is lax, that the intent of the article may fall short of the mark. And I'm concerned, and here's where the question lies. I'm concerned about language in the combined reports on page 18-6, which states that the petitioners consulted with town council to ensure this proposal does not conflict with state law. That's good. DPW Director Gallantyne and DPH Director Reese were also consulted during the development of the proposal. And suggestions from both department directors were incorporated into this article, including clarifying that the department should be given the option, but not the obligation of enforcing daily fines against food vendors that remain out of compliance and the proposed amount of increase for the fines of residential violations. So there seems to be a subjective component to this, and I'm wondering if we could learn under what conditions they might not be obligated to enforce the fines.
Actually, I'm going to let town council answer that. He's been just inactive, then I think he should be earning his money tonight.
Joe Callanan, Town Council, and sadly, I don't get the night off. So this has been a conversation that I've had with Commissioner Gallantyne and Director Reese, and the idea is that the burden of proof to have daily fines, it can't be that I saw that in April and today's June, so can we, you know, fine every day in between? So to actually prove a daily fine, we need some evidence that it happened on June 6, and May 30, and April 15. But just because we have evidence of those three days, we can't squish altogether and say, you know, a daily fine should be from April to June. We could have, if there's evidence on. We could have, if there's evidence on a Friday, and evidence on a Monday, then find it for Friday, Saturday, and Monday. Could do something like that. But I just didn't want people to think that I saw it in January and I saw it yesterday. So there's 180 days of $300 fines. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Black?
Thank you. Ryan Black, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. Mine is probably a question for Commissioner Gallantine, because.
They'll ask me the question as long as.
Okay, I'll ask you, Madam, Madam Moderator. Where can a member of the public see in terms of like the tally for a restaurant getting these fines under the new bylaw?
I'm sorry, I didn't under, I didn't, couldn't understand your question.
It seems the thrust of this warrant article is to, on repeat offenders, correct? And so I'm just curious, like, as I, a member of the public, you know, like, say, like a restaurant gets lobbied with multiple fines, like for, you know, you know, rat infestation, I would want to know, like, so I wouldn't frequent that business. Like, where can I access that information, like, in terms of this restaurant's been fined three times and they haven't rectified the problem?
Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's a Galore's Director of Public Health and Human Services. At this point, that information is not on the website or publicized, but obviously it's available with a public record request.
Thank you.
Excuse me, nobody can yell out anything, thank you. Ms. Ryan?
Jessica Ryan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Sixteen. Just a follow-up question, if the town could elaborate on what is acceptable evidence to ensure consistent enforcement? So that we are certain that we are providing the right information, particularly when it comes to repeat offenders, whether that's video, photos, what is the best way for us to deliver that to you to ensure enforcement? Thank you.
Ms. Gallantine?
Erin Jude Gallantine, Commissioner of Public Works. Typically, we've been, most recently, sort of time date stamped photographs have been really all the evidence that we've need, needed to go out and commence our enforcement process, so that, that works.
Thank you.
Ms. Wu? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it's Ms. Park.
Oh, my God.
Oh, Susan, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Moderator. Susan Park, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seventeen. This is just a comment, but today, for example, I was in Coolidge Corner walking around and I did see a, a pile of trash, like, if the trash can is this high, there was this much trash on top. So I'm wondering if one of the solutions is, one, a bigger trash can? Because it seems repeatedly like the trash is spilling over. And that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is what Town Meeting Member Fran had said, that one of the offenders is basically the town of Brookline because there seems to be these trash cans that are spilling over in all different parts of Brookline that are not even just in the homes. So that's just something else to think about. Thanks.
Ms. Gallantine, would you like to address how the town of Brookline addresses its own issues?
Sure. Erin Jude Gallantine, Commissioner of Public Works. So I think there's some good news, I think, just in terms of the public trash receptacles. As part of the Rodent Control Action Plan, we're adding a second shift. So currently, we have trash collection seven days a week, usually from seven in the morning to three in the afternoon for eight and a half months out of the year. And then for the balance, we go back to a five-day shift. But there's so much that happens from three until dusk. When you think about all the sports, when you think of the commercial areas. So we're adding a second shift that we think will significantly help. We just need more collection. The big bellies, where you often see trash on top, those actually hold five times the, the volume of your typical thirty-five gallon, you know, sort of rubber made trash gallon. So the intent with putting the big bellies out was not only that it was fully contained, but that it also compacted the trash and held greater volume. And when we talk about the town trash and all of that, it's all of our trash. Not just, you know, Public Works, it's everybody using these spaces. So everyone has a responsibility. Thank you.
I think we should blame it all on the BU students, but that's because I live near Comm Ave. Anyway, Ms. Farley?
Yeah, two, two questions. Regina Farley from sixteen. I've been told we're going to be forced to have composting, and I don't think the question was ever fully answered, no matter how many times it's been asked. It is common sense. If you have an open compost post, you're going to attract vermin of all kinds. And I live in an area where there's a lot of vermin, wildlife sanctuary is right up the road. So how do we handle that? Because I don't want to have it, I can tell you. Number two, enough people here know I'm passionate about the open meeting law and conforming. Why would we have to go to all of that? Could I get an explanation for why somebody would have to know enough to ask and go through the arduous process of asking for open meeting information? When it should be something that licenses a license, restaurants are licensed, all these major things, that should be open to the public at all times. And I'm wondering why it would take an open meeting law request? Thank you.
I, I, one, the compost question has been asked and answered. Second, I don't think anyone said anything about open meeting law. I think it is a question of just going to the proper website to find the information. Okay, I will take a motion to call the question.
That is why I'm here. Bob Miller, Precinct Two, I would like to call the question.
Okay, let's take a vote to call the question. It needs a two-thirds majority. No, it was sec, well, multiple people called the question, so I'm taking that as a second. And it was officially seconded. Two-thirds majority, let's drop the vote, please. Okay, the motion to call the question is passed with two hundred and one yes, seventeen no, and eight abstentions. We will now vote on the article itself. The article seeks to increase penalties for violations relating to the storage and removal of garbage, which applies to food vendors, single-family houses, two-family houses, and three-unit buildings. It requires a majority to pass, and we will now drop the vote. The motion passes, two hundred and twenty-eight yes, one no, three abstentions. And I now call my Assistant Moderator, Mr. Karen, back to moderate.
I have a point of order real quickly over here.
Yes, where are you, though?
Jeffrey Benton, Precinct Three. Just some clarity on when and how people can call for the vote, because it seems like you're trying to run a tighter ship. And does that mean absolutely always somebody needs to come to the microphone to call for the vote? Or can you randomly sometimes accept people calling from the back for that?
No, it, it's one instance in which I will let people yell.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to Article Twenty-One, which is a motion that can be found on pages twenty-one-ten to twenty-one-twelve of the combined reports. It is a motion to impose some requirements with respect to hotels and addressing the problem of human trafficking. We will start, it is moved by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Margolis. And we will start by hearing from Mr. Davis, the, one of the petitioners of the article.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator. My name is Jonathan Davis. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Seventeen and a co-petitioner of Article Twenty-One. I do not have any financial interest in this article. I'd like to preface this by saying that the Advisory Committee has made two friendly amendments and corrected a scrivener's error to Article Twenty-One. And I'll be referring to the article with the Advisory Committee changes. Hotel sex trafficking is a national problem that often goes unrecognized. The National Trade Association for the Lodging Industry, the American Hotel and Lodging Association, has a national campaign to try to deter hotel sex trafficking. So does the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Several national hotel brands, including Hilton and Marriott, require some anti-sex trafficking practices. The purpose of the article is to create a culture of anti-sex trafficking practices in Brookline Hotels, to incentivize Brookline Hotels to behave in certain ways that help deter sex trafficking, and to make those practices permanent patterns of behavior, not only for current hotels and their current ownership and current management, but importantly for new hotels that may be created in the future, and also importantly for existing hotels when in the future, ownership changes or new management is hired. In other words, the article seeks to make permanent, normalize, and institutionalize, both now and for the future, certain practices that are known to help deter hotel sex trafficking. Hotels in Brookline are not legally required to behave in these ways. There is no state or a local law that requires such behavior. Whether a hotel does or does not is a business decision that a hotel can adopt or abandon as it calculates its business interests. Even national hotel chains are not required by Massachusetts law or by the laws of any Massachusetts municipality to behave in these ways. It is a business decision for the chains. The article requires hotels to train a defined set of employees in identifying and appropriately responding to signs of sex trafficking. The hotels choose the training entity. If a hotel holds an inholder license issued after the effective date of the article, when the hotel applies for a license renewal, the hotel must provide the select board or its designee with information about the training entity that was chosen, the content of the training, the number of employees and their job titles or descriptions who received the training, the number of employees who did not, and the dates of training. It's up to the select board to decide what to do with this information for purposes of license renewal. The article also requires hotels to post and maintain six anti-sex trafficking notices where hotel employees are present, but hotel guests are prohibited or discouraged from entering, so-called back of the house. And for the hotels to give copies of the notices and information about the posting to the Police Department and to the select board or its designee. The notices are to be chosen by the hotel, but created by appropriate training entities. The purpose is to remind the employees of their training and to be vigilant. The Police Department may check on the posting and may, and may report concerns about posting to the select board or its designee. Again, it's up to the select board to decide what to do with this information for purposes of license renewal. Lastly, the article requires that if a hotel holds an inholder license issued after the effective date of the article, when the hotel applies for license renewal, the hotel must provide the select board or its designee with a report of when employees are required to enter or surveil guest rooms when not responding to requests by guests. This is intended to provide information to the select board and in that way to try to normalize best practices among Brookline Hotels. For example, I understand that Hilton requires room entry or at least surveillance after two days and Marriott after three. Again, it's up to the select board to decide what to do with this information on the license renewal. The Brookline Chamber of Commerce supports the article. Then-acting Chief of Police Pastor has written that the Police Department has no objection to the draft of the article that she reviewed. The Advisory Committee, by a vote of fifteen to five with no abstentions, endorsed the article with two friendly amendments and correction of a scrivener's error. The select board has voted four to zero to zero for favorable action on the Advisory Committee's amendment. Please vote favorable action on the Advisory Committee's amendment, and then favorable action on the main motion. By doing this, you will enact the first law of its kind in the Commonwealth, state or municipal, that requires these hotel practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Penzel? Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator. Hello, I'm Mark Penzel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which by a vote of fifteen to five with three abstentions, urges favorable action on Warrant Twenty-One, a yes vote, as amended by our committee and agreed to by the petitioners. As you've heard from Mr. Davis, Warrant Article Twenty-One proposes a new bylaw that would impose requirements on hotels to deter sex trafficking at their locations. Sex trafficking is a national and international problem. Despite numerous state and national initiatives to combat it, sex trafficking in hotels often goes unnoticed and is not prosecuted, commonly because hotel staff and management are unaware of its telltale signs. Brookline currently has six hotels that fall within the definition of the proposed article and subject to licensing by the town. A seventh at Thirty Webster Place is on the way. Mr. Davis did an excellent job spelling out the requirements of the article, so I will spare you repeating them. To our knowledge, Brookline would be the first community in Massachusetts to adopt such an ordinance, as there are no similar laws in Massachusetts, either at the state or municipal level. Bills requiring training were introduced in two recent state legislative sessions, but were not voted on. Petitioners had previously placed a more detailed article on the fall 2022 town warrant. Because of various issues identified then by the Police Department, the Advisory Committee, and the town's local hotels, the petitioners decided not to move that article last fall. Petitioners' current Article Twenty-One, as amended, addresses all of the key concerns of the various parties, such that there is no opposition from either the Police Department or the hotels, and the Brookline Chamber of Commerce expressly supports it. And while there is no available evidence that sex trafficking is a problem in Brookline Hotels, because of the nature of the problem, we also just don't know. Even in the apparent absence of a current problem, a large majority of the Advisory Committee believes that the article is necessary, both to deter the development of sex trafficking at the hotels and to help expose it, should it develop. Far better to act now before sex trafficking becomes a problem than to act reactively once it becomes one. Although Warrant Article Twenty-One does not require that the select board take any action based on the information required to be reported, the Advisory Committee trusts that the required reports will be one of the factors that the select board considers when deciding whether to renew an innkeeper's annual license. to renew an innkeeper's annual license. The small minority of the Advisory Committee that opposed the article did so not because they were unconcerned about sex trafficking, but because they primarily believed that the goals of the article could be better achieved by including the proposed requirement, requirements as conditions in the hotel license renewal process rather than in the bylaws. Three-quarters of the Advisory Committee disagreed and urges you to vote favorable action, yes, on Warrant 21 as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Von Skoyak.
See how tall Mark is? Too tall for me. On a personal note, I just want to say to John Davis that thank you for persisting and bringing this back to us in better form, and that is evidenced by the near unanimity of approval of what's being presented to you under Warrant Article 21. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again is a, it's a good rule for town meeting processes. Article 21 is a petition to amend the town's bylaws to introduce requirements for hotel inholders, to train staff to identify signs of possible sex trafficking, and post anti-sex trafficking notices in all locations where employees are typically present but guests are not. It further requires inholders to report compliance with the new requirements to the select board when seeking relicensing, as well as information about when employees are required to physically enter or look into guest rooms other than upon the request of an occupant. In debating, in debating Article 21, the select board noted that it appeared similar to an article proposed but not moved at a special town meeting held in November of 2022. The select board questioned whether the Brookline Chamber of Commerce had approved of the article and received a response from petitioners that the chamber's inholder members had no objection. The select board further requested and received word from council for various inholders that there was no objection to the article by the inholders. Finally, the select board questioned whether the article was propounded in response to the prior activities of a relatively recent inholder licensee. Petitioners responded that the article was developed in response to the proposed practices of a licensee in the new, in a new hotel, not any past behavior on the licensee's part. And with that above discussion, and following a prior public hearing on the matter at a meeting held on April 25th, the select board voted 4 to 0 to recommend favorable action on the Advisory Committee's motion under Article 21. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Gold Black Grace?
Good evening. I am Lisa Gold Black Grace. I live at 53 Linden Street. I'm a resident of Brookline. I'm also the co-founder and co-executive director of My Life My Choice. I wish to disclose a potential conflict of interest. Among other things, we train employers in preventing sex trafficking, and we charge a fee. In that way, I could be said to have a conflict of interest with Article 21, but I respectfully submit my testimony anyway. As co-founder and co-executive director of My Life My Choice, I offer this testimony in support of Article 21. As a Brookline resident and mother of three children who went through Brookline Public Schools, I care deeply about this community, and I want to thank the members of Town Meeting for hearing my testimony. My Life My Choice is a survivor-led organization focused on ending commercial sexual exploitation, sex trafficking. In addition to preventing, prevention, training, and consultation locally and nationally, we provide direct services to youth who've been trafficked and live in eastern Massachusetts. Last year alone, we served 278 youth. Over the last 21 years, these youth have come from over 181 towns in Massachusetts, including Brookline. Every day, we see young people who are coerced, manipulated, or forced into the sex trade. The average age at which they were first exploited is 13 years old, middle school age. One Brookline eighth grader was riding the tea into Boston with friends and met a man who thought, who she thought was a really nice guy, liked her. Within a short period of time, this exploiter, pimp, was picking her up at her K-8 school and selling her to countless men. But this is only half the story in terms of how trafficking touches our community. While the youth who are exploited are young and vulnerable, the men who buy them are not. The men who buy sex are disproportionately white, upper-middle class, have kids, have wives, and have jobs. The disparity in power between who buys and who is bought is astonishing. Human trafficking is a social justice issue. The young people we serve are rarely sold on the street, rather their exploitation is brokered online, and the violence degradation and traumas happening within hotels. Our young people are placed in these rooms by their exploiters, and there they serve a steady stream of men. They report being sold in the lowest rent motels to the highest-end hotels and everywhere in between. Some report there being hotel staff who knew what was happening and were complicit. Most report that no one knew what was happening in these rooms. They report a profound sense of being alone without any way to find safety, and it doesn't have to be this way. The signs are there. Hotel workers can be trained to recognize red flags from the moment they sign someone in at the front desk, to when they go in to clean their rooms, to the various signs that a security guard can pick up. In hotels where we have offered training, staff talk about what they've seen and where they might have missed it. They want this information and they want to help. This kind of training is only happening in hotels where leadership has chosen to commit to it. Those are few and far between, and our kids and adults trapped in this abusive industry deserve better. What if we took our town's stated commitment to social justice and used it to say that in our community, it is not okay to commodify a human being, and that there's no such thing as other people's children? I urge you to pass Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a couple of folks at the microphones. We will start over here. Tell us who you are and what's on your mind.
Hi, my name is Vina Priestley from Precinct 4. I just had a quick question. Does this also abide to like bed and breakfasts and ins as well, or is it only for hotels?
Well, that is a good question. I'm going to start with Town Council, who may be able to tell us if this ordinance bylaw would apply to bed and breakfasts and
And ins.
And Airbnbs, or?
Yeah, and well, ins, like we have ins as well in Brookline, not just hotels.
And Mr. Callanan, if you think there's somebody who could, who would be better to answer that, that's fine, but you seemed like the logical choice. Sure. Mr. Davis, does the warrant article, I, I understand you have some legal training. Does the warrant article also apply to Airbnbs or ins or?
No, it applies, it applies just to the category of hotels.
Okay. Thank you.
And I should explain that the reason for that is because the, the structure of licensing is very different, and it's much more complicated, I believe, for Airbnb. So we, we started with the low, the lower hanging fruit.
What about bed and breakfasts that are ins, smaller ins?
If they are, if they fall within the state definition of lot, of hotels, then they would. If they don't, if they're not being licensed as a hotel by the town, then they don't.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, tell us who you are and what you want to know or say.
Thank you so much. My name's Natalia Linoz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I'm also on the School Committee and on the Advisory Council on Public Health. I have a comment and a question at the very end, and it might seem sort of unexpected what I'm going to say, but you know, as someone who works in public health, there's a big distinction between sex work and trafficking, and I'm very much against trafficking. Actually, my PhD, one of the papers was the trafficking of men in the construction industry, which happens in, you know, countries in the Gulf. And I wonder if we would be able to tell the difference between someone in the sex work industry versus someone who has been trafficked. I'm very concerned about children, and therefore, yes, that is, all children in sex work are considered trafficked, and I think our warrant article says that. But I do have concerns that sex work is dangerous work. For those of us in public health, we know that criminalizing it increases HIV risk, it increases, you know, the criminalization basically forces sex workers under, you know, the radar. And by putting up these measures in our hotels, would that also mean that we would be pushing sex work, which happens in hotels, I assume it happens in hotels in Brooklines, under the radar into more precarious work? I raise that as a warning. I know people probably don't consider sex work. Some people may disagree in that even being, you know, a choice for people, but for those of us in the public health community, we do consider it a choice, and protecting the health and human rights of sex workers is important. So the question is, how does this warrant article aim to distinguish between trafficked individuals and those who are sex workers? And again, I agree that children are by definition trafficked, and therefore, an age would be one way of doing that, that if it was, you know, for minors. So I apologize for entering this conversation so late, and I know if this warrant article will likely pass, and I'm for addressing trafficking, I just want us to consider unintended consequences and the potential harm that it could pose on that population. Thank you.
So I don't know if you have anything to add, Mr. Davis, but is there anything in the warrant article that either draws a distinction between human sex trafficking and sex workers, or perhaps you would like to address what the requirements are on hotels, and whether that is a distinction without a difference in this case? But briefly, of course.
Jonathan Davis, co-petitioner. The definition in the article of sex trafficking is "commercial sex induced by force, fraud, and/or coercion," and also means "commercial sex by a minor for financial benefit of another person, regardless of how induced." So that's, that's as far as it goes. Broad force or coercion, and of a, and of a minor, whether, however it's induced.
Okay. And is it, just to clarify, is it correct that what you're requesting would be the posting of and the training of hotel workers in how to recognize when that was going on?
Yes.
Okay. Does, does it create any new criminal penalties on anybody who's involved in it?
No, there are no criminal penalties that are, that are, that are in this, are in this article. The, the, what the article does, it requires reporting by the hotels and then consideration of those reports by the select board when the select board has to determine relicensing.
Okay. Hopefully, that broader context addresses Ms. Linoz's questions. Thank you. Tell us who you are and what you either want to know or want to say.
Thank you. Naomi Schweitzer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'll be voting in favor of this warrant article, and I want to thank Town Meeting Member Davis for bringing this forward. He's been working on this issue since he was a town meeting member for a long time in Precinct 10, and we had the opportunity to work together on similar efforts before it became a warrant article. I want to echo some of the same concerns that Natalia Linoz from Precinct 6 raised, and specifically to those concerns, because this will raise awareness in some of our large hotel properties among the employees there, I'm curious what the stance is and the training and the responses from our police force around sex trafficking and sex work, and how they've been viewing this warrant article, and what kind of training the police have in this arena, and how they may or may not have partnerships right now with our hotels, and with possibly nonprofits like the one that spoke earlier. Thank you.
Well, I think we've already heard that then-acting Chief Pastor, now Chief Pastor, has indicated that the police department is okay with this warrant article. I think that your question sort of goes beyond the scope of this warrant article, and is more directed to what the police department does with respect to human trafficking, which, while a very important question, is I think outside of the scope of what we're actually discussing and trying to figure out in tonight's debate. So with respect, I'm not going to ask Chief Pastor to come down and, and address that question, because I don't think it's particularly at the heart of what we're discussing tonight, but it's certainly a worthwhile question and one I would be willing to bet that the, the department would be happy to let you know on. Sorry if that doesn't satisfy you. Yes, tell us who you are and what you either want to know or would like to say.
Thank you. My name is Bonnie Bastian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. My question is also in the unintended consequences department. I'm curious if someone could enlighten us with a couple of examples of what those red flags are, because when we start discussing entering people's hotel rooms, you know, even the best intention situations like that can go sideways. So I was just curious what these trainings might include as a red flag.
Ms. Gold Black Grace, and I apologize for missing, for muffing your first name the first time. My reading glasses broke while I was up here. Mr. Davis has suggested you might be able to address Ms. Bastian's questions.
I'm happy to. Thanks for asking, Lisa Gold Black Grace. The training is, begins first and foremost with helping the team at the hotel create a protocol for how will they handle things. Though some hotels choose to say that the minute something is seen, law enforcement is called, most have folks on the ground, housekeeping, security, et cetera, go to then a manager at that hotel, who then, then reaches out to law enforcement so that there is a process there. The kind of red flags that they are looking for are not things that require them to be vigilantes and knock on doors and check. So when, for example, someone is in a room, requests no housekeeping service for multiple days, or the housekeeping service goes in and sees, I'm, you know, at the risk of getting more graphic than some folks here would prefer me to, condom wrappers and multiple condom wrappers and lots of extra towels asked for, et cetera. It trains front desk staff that when an adult man comes with a young child or adolescent or a young person, the kinds of questions to just kind of ensure things. So there's a whole, it gets super detailed. It is not about kind of a moral panic, it's about really training folks on what to look for, and the truth is, it works. I mean, we don't have time to go into it, but I could present tons and tons of evidence of things being uncovered within hotels, and again, of kids saying, "I was in there, housekeeping came and went, nobody noticed me." So it feels too important to.
Okay. Two things. One, we have one per, one more person at the microphone, and two, if you're going to move to call the question, you actually have to stand up and come to a microphone to call the question. Who are you and what would you like to know?
I am Carolyn Thall, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 16. Just going back to what Natalia and I think then Naomi were speaking to, although I recognize that it's straying a little bit from the scope, maybe it's really not. I think I would appreciate the opportunity to hear from Ms. Gold Black Grace, sorry, I should know her last name, I've known her for over 30 years, to just maybe address so that we can best understand what we're voting on, what we're looking at, the, this sort of question of sex work versus trafficking, if we could give her that opportunity.
Well, I think we've already, I, if you could give me a more precise question, I really think we've discussed that, and Mr. Davis gave us the difference in the definitions. In fact, I don't think there's a definition between, of sex work in the warrant article, but the definition of sex trafficking. If you'd like to be a little more precise in your question, but so far, I think we've got as much of an answer as we're going to get on the floor of Town Meeting tonight, but I'll give you another shot at it if you, if you want to like refine the question a little bit.
Thanks, I'll try. I, my question would be, if you'd be willing to ask Ms. Gold Black Grace to describe, or just briefly address, in her professional estimation, she's been in this field, I think, for over 20 years. The issue of whether sex work is a choice.
Okay, we're not going to go, we're not going to go there. It's an interesting, it's an interesting and probably an important debate, but it's not the one that we're having tonight on this warrant article. And with respect, I, I do not denigrate the importance of the topic, and I'm absolutely now convinced that it could be a productive discussion, but not on this warrant article. So with apologies, no, we're not going there. Mr. Margolis?
Move the previous question.
Okay. So we have a motion to call the question. I'm quite sure we have a second. Somebody say so. Okay, so we have a motion to call the question. I'm quite sure we have a second. Somebody say second, please. Oh, and we didn't need it. Okay, we have a motion to call the question. And there is nobody at the microphone, so we didn't need a second because no one. What's that? Oh, okay. Well, all right, before we call the question, then, I missed you, and I apologize. Who are you?
Jeffrey Benson, Precinct.
Oh, Jeffrey, okay.
Did you? Not a good oh Jeffrey or bad oh Jeffrey. Too late for that, John.
It's way too late for that. It was too late for that half an hour ago. Did you have a comment or a question?
Question. It'll be a quick one.
I will allow a quick question, and then we will vote on the motion to call the question.
Is there any criteria in the warrant articles? I was interested in that the select board can ultimately remove not renew a license because of this, any criteria for what that is or what training the select board will get in order to know how to balance that information?
In other words, is there anything in the warrant article that tells the select board what to do with the information once they get it?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis, very quickly, is there?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to vote the warrant article. You don't need to move it. There's no one lined up to talk. So if we could have the vote, please let me just clarify. There had been some talk of amendments. There is only one motion in front of you. There are no amendments. By the time that the advisory committee heard it and voted on the motion that that is in front of you, that starts on page twenty-one ten through twenty-one twelve, that is the only motion in front of you. It was agreed to by the petitioners, so it's an up or down vote on that particular motion, if we could have the vote. Hey, the motion carries two hundred and twelve yes, nine nos, and six abstentions.
Mr. Assistant Moderator?
Yes.
Michael Bursting, Precinct Twelve. I'm wondering if Madam Moderator, even at this earlier hour than usual, would entertain a motion to adjourn, knowing that we are going to have to be here.
You'll you'll have to ask Madam Moderator when she resumes the podium, which is imminent.
Yeah, which is in your own vernacular, Mr. Karen, perhaps it is time to beam us out of here.
We didn't hear what you said, which is probably just as well.
Yes, I agree. Okay, let me explain the situation here. You may sit down, Mr. Bursting, and you will be happy. Okay. Here is the scoop. We have three articles left. Next is ranked choice voting. Then there is the police body cameras and indash cameras. And even though we will rush through ranked choice voting in about ten minutes, the police body camera issue may take longer. And then we have a special town meeting, which we have to hold tomorrow regardless. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight so that we can start afresh tomorrow with clear minds and start with, well, first special town meeting one, and then move on to ranked choice voting. Does anybody second the motion to? Okay, let's have a voice vote. Everyone in favor of adjourning? Anybody opposed? No, you said wrong. You said I, so it's unanimous. We are adjourned until tomorrow night.